Good evening, welcome to the West Jordan Planning Commission meeting for September 6th, 2016. We have six members of the commission present tonight. Commissioner Heiner is excused. Lengthy agenda tonight, we do have one item on our consent calendar, which is the minutes from our August 16th meeting.
Move to...
Commissioner Skoski.
I'm sorry. Move to accept the minutes as they are.
For a second, please.
Motion by Commissioner Skoski, seconded by Commissioner Hanson. Discussion to the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Then we have five items that were scheduled as a public hearing tonight. The first one is the Oak Ridge Park subdivision, 6700 West, 8200 South, considering a preliminary subdivision plot, 146 lots on 40 acres. For our company Spencer Moffitt is the applicant, is the applicant present? Turn it over to you.
Good evening, thank you for letting me take a little bit of time hopefully tonight. We've presented this project previously, it's a residential subdivision out on 6700 West and 8200 South. Larry typically does this and does a much better job than I do at it. We have been working with city staff over the last several months to iron out some engineering issues, we think we have all those resolved. As part of the application, I think the most important part, at City Council we agreed to go to R18, well we got the R18 rezoned, we went with the home size E, which was a big deal, they wanted to see an upsize in the home and we're okay to do that. You know, pretty straightforward, we're seeking approval for 145 lots and happy to answer any questions that you have for me rather than steer you off in a direction you don't want to go.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dardner?
As the planning commission recalls, this property was, the general land use map was amended, the zone was changed sometime last spring, I think, maybe late winter. It was a 50 acre site that was going to be a high school at one time, well it was set aside as a school, it's owned by the Jordan School District. However, they chose to surplus 40 of that acres at that time, as you can see on the map on the screen, they've kept 10 acres at the corner of 826700 for a future school, leaving the rest of it for residential development. To the south, there's a trail along 8200 South, the applicant will be constructing the trail when that phase comes on, it's a four-phase development. The phases will probably start from the north and work to the south, but the trail will be improved along 8200 South and then, as you can see, follow 6700 West to meet up with the trail that's being constructed in the Wash area in the Highlands Development. As Spencer said, it's pretty straightforward, it's R18 zoning, it's plotted out at 146 lots on 40 acres. There's a retention pond just above the school site and the development meets all of the zoning requirements and preliminarily meets engineering and fire requirements, meets all the criteria for approval and so staff at this point is recommending preliminary approval for Oak Ridge Park by subdivision.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Mr. Pack?
Oh, thank you. Just one, Mr. Dardner, at the bottom of page three it mentions that the Jordan School District is aware of the proposed subdivision, there's been completion of the report and no official comments have been made, we'd like to be able to service the students in question, I was just curious if you, in the interim period, have received anything from them?
No, generally what I do on a subdivision is preliminarily put on an agenda, I will email my contact at Jordan School District with what is being proposed and a site plan and a plot. Of course, they're fully aware of this because they are the ones selling the site and so, no, they didn't have any comments other than that they can service their students in the area with schools.
Great, thank you, and understanding by law it's not a condition of approval, it would just be nice if they would give some specifics on how they propose to service any more students with their schools already in the area being overtaxed. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Green?
Near the bottom of, oh, I guess I have to turn that on, sorry. Thank you. Near the bottom of page four, it talks about the fence, the block will break, the pre-cast hillside walls along 8200 South, 6700 West, my back is, are those required to go to the design committee, design review committee?
No. Just the one?
What's that?
Just the one question?
Right now.
Okay. All right, then let me introduce our public hearing process. As I open a public hearing, we would invite anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this particular item to the microphone, if you would kindly give us your name and contact information in the event that city staff would like to call us if you want your comments or questions there. And you'll have three minutes to make your comments, as that three minutes approaches, you'll hear a little buzzer up here if you would kindly conclude your comments, we would appreciate that. And on that note, we'll open the public hearing on the side.
My name is Scott Thomas, representing the Jordan School District, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here and for the planning commission to give me a few minutes just to talk in regards to the question asked, yeah, Jordan School District now is, and you may be aware, operating under an interreglement that they entered into with all of the cities and one of the, one of the requirements was for us to evaluate, assess, and look at any, what was deemed as surplus property, in other words, property that had been purchased, you know, some time ago to the intent of building schools on, but there was no immediate plan to build schools on those pieces of property and then to surplus those pieces of property. So we went through that evaluation process and this was a piece that, half of it was purchased back in 1959, so quite some time ago, and as you know, cities change, master planning changes, and so we were asked to look at this piece of surplus, we went out, we went to the city, the city wanted to defer and put it out on market, we've been working well with Boyer Company and with city staff, who've been very, very helpful in looking at what the needs are of the district and understanding that there's rapid growth in the west-west Jordan area, what the board has to do is let's retain 10 acres for future building of an elementary there. 50 acres anymore, maybe 10, 15, 20 years ago was suitable for a high school site, but now to net, we need almost nearly 60 acres for roads and infrastructure and parking and all those different amenities that we offer, so we appreciate working with the city and appreciate this opportunity to work with you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to comment on this item? Then close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Mr. Pack?
Thank you. It's my understanding that along backup V111, that will be fenced as well along, as well as 6703, is that correct?
Yes.
There's also the double prongage lots that run along 6700 West towards the north, I wonder if there'd be any fencing required here?
The lots along 60, yeah, so there'd be a lot, a fence along 6700 also.
Due to the double prongage?
Yep.
My second question is, I see just two exit entrances, one is onto V111, which is a, is a road.
Now, there's one, one...
And then one onto 6703.
There's two on 6700?
Yeah.
And then one on 82, there's none onto the...
I understand, I guess Matt was just...
Yeah.
I might be wrong, Matt, I'm sorry.
That's all.
So, okay, those are my two questions, I was concerned about the double prongage lots, so...
Makes me nervous when you guys start out a meeting this quiet. If there's no further discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion. I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary subdivision plot for Bella Estates located at approximately 7481 South, 5490 West, subject to conditions 1 through 5 as listed in the staff report. What? Oh, yes it is, never mind, it's not Bella Estates, it is Oak Ridge Park subdivision. Motion by Commissioner Law, seconded by Commissioner Skoski, any discussion to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Brings us to the third item on our agenda, which is Walker Tape, 9312 Prosperity Road, considering a preliminary subdivision plot in an M1 zone. Commissioner Quinn?
I just need to, is that all, please, I'm going to be silent in this discussion?
Absolutely, thank you. Tom Stewart Construction, Casey Call is the applicant, is the applicant present? Turn the time over to you, sir.
Thanks, Casey Call with Tom Stewart Construction, so as you can see, this is on Prosperity Road, just over three acres, it'll be a business-owned property by Walker Tape, they do light manufacturing and distribution, any other information I can answer any other questions you guys might have, so...
Any questions for the applicant? If we have any, thank you. Mr. Pack?
Thank you, so Walker Tape subdivision plot A is a major subdivision because they are dedicating .32 acres of property to the city of West Jordan. The property is located at the corner of Prosperity Road in Dan and Wayne. Staff is recommending approval from the planning commission with the three conditions listed in the staff report.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, and we'll open this item for public comment, if there's anybody who would like to comment on this particular item, the time is now yours. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Skoski?
Based on the positive findings that were sent to the staff report and the information received during the meeting, I move that the planning commission approve Walker Tape subdivision plot A for the property located at 9312 South Prosperity Road, located in an M1 zoning district with the conditions set forth in the staff report.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Skoski, seconded by Commissioner Pack, discussion to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item four on our agenda is Delio, D533 South, 2940 West, preliminary site plan and conditional use permit for outdoor storage in an M1 zone. Ryan Kitterman is the applicant, turn the time over to you.
Good evening, thank you for your time. We're proposing building a shop and some office space, 2940 West and 8533 South, in an M1 zone, right across from Dunford Bakers and Rocky Mountain Bread. We're planning to also apply for a conditional use permit for outdoor storage of related equipment to our concrete pumping supply and, and sales dealership. We've tried to design the building with some architectural features that will add some harmony to the area and make the building functional and safe to, to use based on the size of the lot and the shape of the lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Skoski?
Thank you, just a quick question, I noticed that the back of the property is facing the apartment complex, I'll hang there.
Yes.
Can you tell me what kind of materials storage for the outside in, in that area?
Mostly just some, you know, parts related to the equipment that would be stored mainly in containers, we'll also have a dumpster on site and probably a steel recycling bin, but nothing high or anything above the fence line, at least within the 20-foot permitted area.
Great, thank you.
Will there be any chemical storage in that area?
No.
Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Skoski?
I just want to compliment your own building, the building looks really great.
Oh, thank you.
And it's nice to see people give interest to that, making West Jordan look good.
Thank you very much, yeah, we're excited too.
I think that's it?
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Pack?
Thank you, so the application is for Delio, this would be a two-part decision by the planning commission, the first for a preliminary site plan, and this preliminary site plan is in front of the planning commission due to two loading bay doors that are facing 2940 West. These loading bay doors, the ordinance allows for loading bay doors on the condition that either the bay doors are architecturally integrated into the side of the building and/or that they're screened with a fence or landscaping. In this case, the applicant integrated the two loading bay doors with two decorative gable ends, I believe that they'd be timber. It's staff's opinion that, that they were, are integrated sufficiently to meet the intent of the ordinance, but that's a decision by the planning commission to make. The second decision would be a conditional use permit for outdoor storage, the outdoor storage would be located behind the building, in the gravel yard area. Staff is recommending that the planning commission approve both the preliminary site plan with the three conditions listed in the staff report and the conditional use for outdoor storage with the nine conditions listed in the staff report. Those nine conditions are an attempt to mitigate any possible negative consequences of the outdoor storage proposed on the site.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
So, I agree, so when I'm look, so I'm looking at the, the apartments are the ones that we're talking about, the fence to the east, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I had, I'm looking at the aerial map and I was all turned around, so, okay.
Any other questions, comments for staff? In that case, we'll open this item up to the public, if there's anybody who would like to comment on this particular item. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Skoski?
Based on the findings set forth in the staff report, the information received during the meeting, I move that the planning commission approve Delio preliminary site plan for the property located at 8533 South, 2940 West, in an M1 zoning district with the conditions set forth in the staff report.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Skoski, seconded by Commissioner Quinn, any discussion to the motion? Commissioner Pack?
Oh, thank you, just, just the one discussion, item two, since most of the members here have had experience serving in the, the design review committee and it's not going before the design review committee, I assume that they're, you know, you addressed the outdoor storage and, and materials that are being used, just, I just wanted to see if anybody had any concern with, with anything that's being proposed, obviously from the planning commission standpoint for the conditional, for the preliminary site plan, but also from a design review committee standpoint, since it'll just be staff that's very capable and able, but, you know, to get more feedback and any, any concern.
I was quite impressed with the overall renderings that were in the back of the document.
I like that they've added those gable ends for the garage doors, I think it makes the whole face of the building look nice.
And the outdoor storage, I mean...
Well, and I like, well, in the, in the staff report, they talk about this, the 20-foot setback and that the fence has to be slatted and everything, and, and where the applicant has talked about most of the items to be in containers anyway, I think I would be okay with that, living adjacent to the property, so...
Meaning where you live adjacent to the property, you know, putting yourself in the residential...
Right, and I, I would be okay with that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Green?
I'm just wondering how we enforce some of these light vehicles stored on property on paved areas and the 20-foot setback, but, that's just me?
Commissioner Skoski?
I think, you know, if there were complaints put in, then a code officer would go out and make sure that it would be enforced, you know, unless there would, were complaints, I, you know, it's kind of up to residents to tattle, if they're not happy with it.
And if I may, basically, even if these weren't specifically listed as conditions of approval, they're code, this is more of a courtesy heads up to the applicant that these are, these are code requirements that are already applied to your site regardless, so, but, you're correct, unless, unless we, we see that there's an issue or, or hear that there's an issue, it's tough to write it like that, but if they're, if down the road there becomes an issue, we, at least we can have teeth we can rely on.
One, one other thing, you know, with, and this is just strictly my opinion, I don't know the applicant, but with the attention to detail that they put into their building, make it look nice, and to work with the city, I would, I would give them the good faith that they would maintain the, the agreement that we're setting up today.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Let's vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Commissioner Skoski?
Based on the positive findings set forth in the staff report and information received during this meeting, I move that the planning commission approve Delio outside storage conditional use permit for the property located 8533 South, 2940 West, in an M1 zoning district with the conditions set forth in the staff report.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Skoski, seconded by Commissioner Quinn, discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Item five on our agenda, Trampoline Park, 7288 South, Campus View Drive, considering preliminary site plan and conditional use permit for personal instruction service in the PO zone, Amber LLC is the applicant. Could you kindly give us your name and...
Wayne Burton.
Thank you, sir.
What makes, it's going to be a trampoline park slash ninja warrior obstacle course, hopefully it'll be something that the, the city wants and needs. One thing that, there are a couple of them in the city that, in the valley that, that are trampoline parks, ours is a little bit different, that it has the ninja warrior obstacle course, portion to it, but even more importantly, what we're trying to do is, there is a three-hour gap in between kids, when kids get off school at three and when their parents can pick them up at six, we are trying to make a facility that kids can go there for instruction, the people that we will hire will be good in either science, English, or math, the first hour the kids will be tutored or do their homework or whatever according to the instructions of their parents, and then they would be turned loose to have recreation and fun and exercise, that's the, probably the thing that'll make our park a little bit different from anybody else's.
Any questions for the applicant, Commissioner Pack?
Thank you, a question for you, please, just because in our staff packet it's listed as personal instruction service, and, and in your letter of intent that mentions, as you just said, after-school drop-off, kids are coming, exercising, having fun, tutors, wonderful science, English, math, group fitness classes for adults, and so I'm, I'm just wondering, how much of it is going to be like private instruction and how much of it is a free-for-all kind of admission, hey, go ahead and go bounce and go jump?
The first hour, this three-hour block that I talked about, will be instruction, classroom setting with the desks and chairs with the instructions of tutors, and the people that we'll hire will be good at, in those three different areas, and so in answer to your question, that will be a structured time, then they'll be turned loose, turned loose to be, to free-for-all or do whatever they would like, and then early in the morning there will also be classroom instruction, well, no, exercise instruction for aerobics on the trampolines.
Okay, thank you.
So, my, my question would be, what percentage of the business, maybe this will get better of what you're asking, what percentage of the business is going to be open time that people can go in versus instructional time, based on the, the hours a day or revenue or whatever, you want to give us a percentage of?
It'll be open from 3:00 until roughly 9:00, some nights will be 10:00, and it's really only that first hour in between 3:00 and 4:00 that will be instructional, other than the classroom, I mean, the, the exercise instruction for ladies who want to get in fit on the trampolines.
Commissioner Hanson?
You mentioned a ninja, now is this instruction or is somebody who wants to act like a ninja?
I'm sorry?
You mentioned a ninja type thing within your facility, are you giving lessons on, on that type of activity?
Yes, we will have somebody on staff that is, that knows the equipment, that knows how to use it more for instruction than it is for, for protection and safety features rather than instruction, we're hoping that people that go there will already have the desire and the athletic ability to maintain the, the course.
And if they don't, they won't be athletic?
Then, then they will be instructed.
And who, who will your tutors be for that first hour, I mean, are they an educator or would there be someone that's there to help?
Just somebody there to help, somebody that is either good in math, science, or English.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Primarily, how will the, how will the, the kids that are coming there for after-school, what's their transportation method to the facility?
It would be there, at some point we might get a bus, but initially it's them, their parents or they would make up the arrangements to get there, to the park.
And given that the, you said children ages 5 to 99, given the, the younger setting there, do you have to have a daycare license from the state?
Oh, I'm sorry, what license?
Do you have to have a license to operate a daycare from the state?
No, we don't, we are not, we're, we're not going to be a daycare.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for the applicant? I think that might be it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Heiner?
It goes to Chair, like the last item, this is kind of a two-part deal for the planning commission to weigh in on, first would be the preliminary site plan, and then the second is the conditional use permit, as the staff report indicates, the use permit would be in regard to the use as a professional, or as a professional service, normally, or, sorry, personal instruction service, the code indicates that that is administrative conditional use and typically the commissioners don't see those, however, just to be efficient, we decided to tack that on to the site plan review. Looking at the surrounding area, you can see that it's part of the, the office component of Jordan Landing, and as I mentioned in the pre-meeting, lot line adjustment was applied for and received approval to move this lot line to the north, so it's all one lot at this point to facilitate the site. The, we've gone through all the required findings for both the conditional use and the site plan and believe that it meets those, those criteria. I appreciate the commissioner's questions regarding the use of the site, it's our understanding that this, the definition of personal instruction service based on the information that we had received, as long as, as the, I guess the tipping point is the, the... As long as, as the, uh, I guess the tipping point i- is the, the, um, as far as the use goes is, uh, what, uh, you know, what is the majority of the time or majority of the use of the building going to be? Is it going to be instruction, personal instruction service, or is it going to be, uh, fall in the category of indoor recreation? And those are two separate categories or definitions in our code. Uh, based on the information that we had received, uh, our, our impression was that it could qualify for a personal instruction service. Um, but, uh, hearing some of the, the comment from the, the applicant today, I would like the commissioners to maybe flush that out a little bit more and, and see if it truly does meet the definition of personal instruction service. And if you'd like, I can read the two definitions and, and we can put those on the record and...
Please.
Okay. We've got a lot of definitions in our code here. Okay. Per code definition, it says, "Personal instruction service. An establishment primarily engaged in the provision of informational, instructional, uh, personal improvement and similar services involving instructional information. Typical uses include art and music schools, uh, driving and computer instruction, gymnastic and dance studios, handicraft or hobby instruction, health and fitness studios, martial arts training, and swimming clubs." So, based on that definition, uh, and, and again, per the information that we received, we felt, we felt that it fit this category, uh, listed in, in our code. So, uh, based on that interpretation, um, we've, we felt, again, it met the criteria and, i- if you'd like, I can read the definition of, of indoor recreation, but it'll take minutes to pull that out, so. In the meantime, if you have any questions, please let me know. Okay, I've had it. Okay, uh, "Recreation and entertainment, uh, indoor. An establishment offering recreation, uh, entertainment or games of skill to the general public or members that is wholly enclosed in a building. Typical uses include bowling alleys, indoor theaters, bingo parlors, pool halls, billiard par- parlors, video game arcades, racquetball, and handball courts, and amusement rides." So, those are our two, I guess, most applicable definitions that we reviewed when we brought this application in.
We need more bingo halls and billiard parlors. Those, those are lacking, I think, in our city.
I was thinking amusement rides, where's the General Tunes in West Jordan?
Commissioner Pack.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you reading that, Mr. Langford, because just when I think professional office, I'm thinking, you know, a doctor or dentist or a lawyer, someone dressed up, you know, wanting kind of a quieter environment, and it does say studio, and as you mentioned in the code, professional office primarily deals with art, music, dance, health, fitness. I mean, I can see how that would fit here. I'm just wondering if this would be more of an indoor recreation type thing when, be- because I just have a question on, and I don't know, and, and the applicant has also mentioned, it, it's kind of a mix, and I'm certainly not anti-trampoline or, or anti, you know, school tutoring or, or fitness classes. I've been in the health and fitness industry a long time and, and my kids love watching American Ninja Warrior, so it's pretty fun, but I, I'm just wondering if I'm in a professional office building surrounding this and there's a large volume of traffic coming in with kids being picked up, dropped off, to me that seems more commercial indoor recreation, just as I'm, I guess that's just the way I interpret professional office versus indoor recreation. However, I do see a similarity, as you mentioned, in a dance or health or fitness with trampoline. So I, I guess the big question again that it comes down to is, what is the ratio of just having patrons come in and jump? Cause I've been to airborne and similar facilities with all of my kids and to me that doesn't seem to fit the most, uh, proprietary use of that. Now, there, there is personal instruction going on, that's right, but I guess that is the big question, how, what, what's the ratio and what is an acceptable ratio? If it were all personal instruction, great, but it sounds like there will be major times where the general public can just come in and use it just like any other indoor trampoline park would be my concern for the surrounding professional offices.
If I may, also, I guess, be good for the discussion, uh, looking at the use table in our professional office, uh, zones, it, I, I don't know if I could pull it up really quickly for the commission, but, um, under permitted use, it, it does include recreational. Is there a definition that I can find for recreational? No. Um, it's kind of interesting that they included that, but, um, there are other quite intensive uses allowed in the professional office zone, uh, including, um, you know, restaurants, uh, which could generate quite a bit of traffic. Obviously, uh, we, we've allowed, uh, some hotels, uh, which had some, some peak flows as well. Hospitals, uh, another, you know, there, there are quite a few, uh, high, high traffic generating uses, uh, allowed in, in the professional office. And if I could just kind of clarify, Commissioner Pack, you, you mentioned professional office. The, the definition I read was personal instruction service, not professional office.
Oh, could, could you please read professional office?
Professional office.
Well, I, I mean, it's, it's in the packet where, where it says, "Well, uses which produce loud noises, excessive vehicle traffic, and excessive parking needs are prohibited." And I'm just wondering, wh- what is the zone out by, like out by Integra Core, where you've got the synergy dance studios? What is that? Is that commercial? Well, that's industrial out there.
Is that off of Bear Court Road?
Yes.
That would be N-one in that area.
That's what I'm thinking, that, that, because I just know that's a nightmare. Obviously, the buildings weren't made to have one hundred and fifty kids at one time in there. The parking and traffic is just very dangerous and atrocious out there. There's really not the best use of, of something like that, so I was just wondering if it might be a similar circumstance where there might be too much traffic, not enough parking to house that, and, and who knows how many people will show up, but it's kind of a moving target, I, I presume, but, but would you mind reading? I- i- is that the entire professional office excerpt? Or, or the excerpt that we have in the packet? Is that the entire code?
Which page were you reading?
I apologize, page three, under criteria one.
So that, that is, uh, under criteria one, that is the, the purpose and intent of, of the PO zone, not necessarily the, the definition of, of professional office. I could pull that up. If you give me a minute here. It might take a little bit, so.
And I hope that the right intent comes across. I'm not against this business, I'm just wondering if it's in the right area.
Commissioner Hanson, do you have a question while, start searching?
Um, yes, I, I just have a couple of concerns. Number one, it says, um, the first hour that they get there after school will be, uh, for study, homework, whatever. If you've got working parents, is an older brother and sister gonna bring a five-year-old? What's that five-year-old gonna do? There's nobody there, I mean, if we're not gonna have a daycare and parents are working, there's a safety issue as far as I'm concerned, because they're not gonna be doing homework for an hour. And so I do believe that if you've got a five-year-old, a six-year-old running around with trampolines and such, they're gonna wanna be home, and I believe that there might be a, a safety issue there. I know I wouldn't want one of mine there with a parental concern or someone that's older that can watch them. Um, and in effect, there's only the one hour of, um, instruction. Um, I was under the impression it was a lot more instruction on the trampolines with the ninjas, that type of thing, and it appears that it's, um, it's just people who are aware of how to use these things and not someone that's professional at doing so. So that is one of my concerns.
I don't know if I can answer that, maybe that's more, or more appropriate for the applicant, but I could read that definition.
Thank you.
The definition is not professional office. The, the definition is just strictly office. Um, so it's lengthy, lengthy, so bear with me. It says, "Building room or department where executive management, administrative or professional services are provided, except medical services and excluding the sale of merchandise, except as incidental to a primary use. Typical uses include real estate brokers, insurance agencies, credit reporting agencies, property management firms, investment firms, employment agencies, travel agencies, advertising agencies, secretarial services, data processing, telephone answering, telephone marketing, paging and beeper services," I don't know if that's a thing anymore. "Accidentally, accidentally transmission service, post offices, and express mail offices, uh, excluding major mail processing and distribution, offices for utility book collection, professional or consulting services in the fields of law, architecture, design, engineering, accounting, and similar professions, interior decorating consulting services, and business offices of private companies, utility companies, public agencies, trade associations, unions, and nonprofit organizations." Something needs to be updated.
So those paging services go hand in hand with the bingo parlors. So, question that I had is, dovetailing off of Commissioner Pack is, what are the implications to this conditional use application if this is determined to be more of a, uh, recreation and entertainment indoor? I can't find the use table for some reason, searching through code.
The, the use tables in thirteen-five-six D.
Is that the commercial zone? I know that, that indoor recreation is, is allowed in our commercial, like SC-two, SC-three, those types of, of, uh, zones. You would not find it in association with, now, our, our, uh, PO and B R P zones.
Commissioner Green.
Am I up next?
I think so.
Okay.
Everybody's got a light on, so.
I think we've asked this question twice, and I think Scott actually wants us to pin this down, so I'm gonna see if we can bring the applicant back up, just so I can pin it down on these hours, so we can get this figured out.
I, I think now would be a great time for that.
So from three to four, we have kids being tutor, instruction, we got that checked. From four to six, what's happening with these kids? Are they just jumping or is there someone out there saying, you jump with one foot here or two feet here, you jump off this wall, and are we having somebody out there actually teaching these kids how to jump on a trampoline?
Absolutely, that is the intent. There is only one hour of classroom in, sitting at a desk instruction, but the rest of the time will be instruction with trained, um, people that are good at trampolines and the ninja portion of it. It's for training, um, then they're going to be turned loose so that they can practice what they've been teaching.
So these are certified trampoline instructors? They're not just teenage kids who are really gonna jump on a trampoline?
No, not all of them will be certified, but there will be at least three people that are certified.
Okay, so that's from three to, or from four to six, what's happening from six to nine?
Um, it's the same thing.
Just whoever wants to wander enough the street and get a wild lesson?
Yes, but they can, they also will have instruction.
Okay, and this is what's happening from twelve to ten on Fridays and Saturdays? There's not gonna be, I guess our, our question is, is there an hour of the day where it's just, hey, I'm not gonna jump like you can at that Draper facility or the warehouse or these, any of these other jump trampoline places?
No, it will be like that. They will be in there, but we will have instruction, people that are certified to teach them how to jump, the correct ways of jumping and the safe ways of jumping and, uh, the, they would utilize the best exercise.
So nobody gets on a trampoline without getting some kind of instruction first? Or, or if I've been there yesterday, can I come on today and just jump on for an hour for free and just go without any instruction?
Yes, I think that they would be able, allowed to jump if they had already prior instruction.
Okay.
I have no questions.
I'm not sure that's the answer you want, but I'm just trying to be honest.
Uh, but I think we're just trying to nail down how much of this is just fun time and how much of this is actually qualified professional instruction, you know?
So, we have the applicant up, other questions for him?
No, I'll, I'll, I'll come back to this.
Commissioner Skoski.
So, um, you say there's certified individuals, uh, out there jumping. Would you offer training to, uh, be able to receive that certification at your facility?
Quite frankly, I have never thought about that, but we would if we had to.
Uh, Commissioner Pack?
Oh, thank you. So, uh, I guess kind of a two-part question. How many people would be allowed in a group where there's an instructor teaching them? Be- because I can see, obviously you don't wanna turn away business, but at the same time, you know, to give back with supervision and instruction, what would be like the maximum amount, like a six to one ratio, six students to one instructor, or, and, and how, how do you plan on regulating that?
I haven't thought about that. I, to be real honest with you, we would, we would try to make it as organized as possible so that the kids are really getting instruction, and if it got too much, we would hire more people, but as far as a ratio, I have to be honest, I haven't thought of that.
Okay, thank you, because I, I love the idea of doing tutoring and having a place for latchkey kids to go, and, but we're just trying to figure out, and, and to me, that, that's a tough one, where, you know, if there's not a set business plan or model on how many the maximum, how many maximum people would be allowed with each instructor, that's a, I mean, that's, that's a tough one. I, with some things that I do of instructional nature, I have to work with children as well, and I know anything over six, six to one with a lot of, uh, tennis, for instance, balls are flying all over and it gets dangerous, and I can only imagine on trampolines, and so I certainly don't presume, you know, I don't know how to operate a trampoline business, but I think that would be a real poignant, important question, uh, to, you know, when do you say when? When do you turn people away? And, you know, you wouldn't wanna have to turn away, you know, a business model, but it's hard to make, uh, you know, money if, you know, six to one ratio, you gotta charge some good money, and for, for these people to have a bona fide lesson instead of a membership dues, like, uh, I, I think that's the only question for the applicant, and thank you, sir.
Any other questions while he's up? Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Green.
Mr. Green, we, we, as you talk about the definition of whatever the heck it was, the personal, personal instruction services, it talks about health and, it talks about health and fitness studios. So what, what first comes to my mind, and so I guess my, I guess here's a, here's a question that we can ask. If somebody took that Life Fitness Center that's down in the river bottom, down in St., in South Jordan, or the Vasa Gym that's over on the corner of Seventy-Eighth and Redwood, and we wanted to drop it along Campus View Drive, would we permit that?
Yes, with an administrative conditional use permit.
Cause, cause, you know, you can go, you can go play basketball at Vasa, you can go swim at, you can go swim at Vasa, and you can do all those things at Life Fitness and all those other kinds of things, and I think that, I, I'm gonna say this out loud, I, I would never have thought anybody would make money setting up trampolines, but okay, that's, it's the American dream and it works, okay? So, you know, that, I would've never, ever thought about that, so, I, I, you know, I can see a fitness component, I can see some other things, but at the end of the day, you know, the, the code, the code permits recreational. I mean, you see that. I, I see that in the list, 'cause I pulled the list up, it, it allows recreational, allows fast food restaurants in a PO zone, it allows for, uh, it allows for, it allows for preschool in the, in the zone, so, I mean, you can have a preschool, you can have a preschool in a PO zone. So, honestly, I, I'm not sure, given what, you know, when, when you look, you can have a hospital, heck, you have a... heck, you have a, and when it gets right down to it, you have a golf course in a PO zone. So, you know, is golf course recreational or is golf course, is golf fitness? Well, or if you ask Tiger Woods if you make money on it, you know, one of the three. So, you know, if you can have golf courses, you can have hotels, you can have the preschools and recreational line and fast foods. The traffic issue's not a big deal. You have a K through twelve school, you have a vocational school, you have transitional homes and large, you know, you have large group homes in the area. I think that what we're seeing is the blurring of recreation and fitness and everything else that occurs as ordinances get antiquated, that I'm not sure that I have my bigger concern, my actual bigger concern in the building itself is that really what we're building is a, is a big open building. It's, I know it's not that I'm going to say this. It looks more like a warehouse, and so we're putting more of a warehouse-type building that we would see over in an M one zone or something else. We've got this open building in a PO zone that I'm wondering if that fits, you know, for the long-term purposes. And that, that was my bigger concern over the, over the, was actually over the building itself. Because you really got a two-story building that's open and a lot of space and in a PO zone. So, you know, that's, that, that's my, that would be my bigger concern over not necessarily what's the use in it, but, I mean, you know, the gymnastics studio that my daughter, or my granddaughter goes to, same kind of building over on Seventy-Eighth off the Bingham Highway right there. So, I don't know. I, I don't have much, as much of a concern over the use as I do the building itself, but.
Commissioner Pack.
Oh, thank you. And just so that I understand what I'm just trying to learn, and I want to make sure I understand the benefit of the doubt. Mr. Langford, when you were reading the first, when you were on your phone reading professional office, you were listening primarily art, music, dance, health, fitness, swimming, so I can see a correlation use there. But then when you read office, there was nothing even close to having anything like a trampoline park. So can you please, for my benefit, help me understand? You were reading professional office, but in office, was it zoning? Was it permitted use? What was the difference between the two things you were reading?
I think the first definition you read was personal instruction service.
Correct.
Well, there was personal instruction, but then there was professional office that you read, and then there was...
That was the actual definition of office.
So I read three definitions. The first was personal instruction service.
Okay, that was personal instruction.
The second one was indoor recreational.
Okay.
And the third was office. So those were the three definitions.
And office was the last one that you read. I mean, there was nothing even close. But what was, what, when you're saying office, that's not a professional office designation? That's just office? So what's the difference? Sorry, I'm confused there.
So we have our professional office zone, and, and on page, what did you say? Page three of your report? Yeah, page three of your report lists the purposes and intent of the overall zone. Within that overall umbrella, we have different categories or different uses that can fit within that overall umbrella. One of them with administrative condition of use would be a personal instruction service. Another use would be hotels, Commissioner Green listed, or golf course or whatever. There's lots of different uses that can fit within the purpose of the professional office zone, which, you know, the general purpose isn't binding, it's just a general guideline that sets up the actual, the rest of the ordinance that would follow. So the, on page three, you have the purpose of the PO zone. If you were to pull up the full code, this is kind of the preamble to the rest of the meat of the professional office zone. After the purpose, then you get into the specific use table that highlights all the individual uses, whether they're permitted, conditional, administrative, conditional. And so the further you go into that, that code, that ordinance, the more specificity you get. So this, Ray just included the, the general preamble, general purpose of the professional office zone. I don't know if that helps.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Sockowski.
Thank you. So just to quantify this, first of all, I'd like to address something that you earlier, and it's just my opinion, but the trampoline parks as being a professional thing, it seems to me that this is kind of an, an odd subject in the sense that there are trampoline parks and it is professional. So we have kind of a weird mix here. But, but the way that I'm looking at it is that trampoline parks don't really fit into most zoning. It would be odd if it was next to a grocery store. It would be odd if it was in a office space like this. It would be odd. It's just one of those things that doesn't quite seem like it fits in really anywhere. And, and the way that I look at it is, we have to look for the highest and best use in the overall area. And where this is a professional office area, just one street away is Jordan Landing in their entertainment area. So if I just look at it just as the office space, it seems weird to me. But the highest and best use of the overall area, if you look at it with that in mind, it kind of fits. So where they have, I count the parking stalls, there's a hundred and six, including six handicap stalls. It seems to me that parking probably won't be an issue where, you know, even if you had a hundred kids in there, there's a parking stall for each one of them. So I don't, I don't see that it's going to be causing major congestion in that. There, there seems to be, in my opinion, enough parking and enough, you know, ability for people to come in off the road and, and make the turn. Where it's all contained within the building, really don't see that it's going to be disturbing any of the surrounding tenants. I think that, you know, I, yeah, I think that, I think that it would kind of work here. And that's just my opinion, but I know it's a little different. It doesn't quite fit in the box, but I think it would be just fine. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
I, I agree with you, Commissioner Sockowski. I, I think it, it fits, and without, and I have to tell you, without a big definition of recreational in the, in the code, I think, I'm not even sure it needs an administrative condition because even if it was determined recreational, recreation fits in a, in a PO zone without any better definition. So I, I agree with you. It's in Jordan Landing and the, and the, you know, everything else is down the street, you know, the ice cream store, the ice cream store over by the Target, two doors down. So, you know, two streets, uh, street down. So, you know, I, I agree with you. I, I think it's, I think it works. I'm not even sure it needs an administrative condition. I mean, maybe even be committed, personal instruction service. Okay. It, it probably fits that too. But I, with that being said, I am going to make a motion.
We have a public hearing.
We haven't had the public hearing yet? I thought we did, man. Sorry.
I'm curious, but isn't there a similar, we have a similar business off of Seventy-Eighth and New Bingham?
Yeah.
Just south of that. Any idea if that's a conditional or permitted or what was that called? Meat frogs or?
Yeah, right over across from the gas stations there.
South side of New Bingham?
Yeah.
Is this in a CG zone?
Oh, is that okay?
It's a different, it's a different.
There are trampolines there.
Oh, there are? Okay. It's been a while since I was in there. Never mind.
Same thing.
Same concept, so.
No instruction.
Okay. Well, we've had an awful lot of discussion before our public hearing, but we'll go ahead and open this item up to the public if anybody who would like to comment on this particular item.
Hello, I'm Helen Harboryover. I own the property that is to the, let's see, across from Jordan School District. Those two lots right there. The lots are Seventy-three Sixteenth South and Seventy-three Forty-four South Campus View Drive. Do you need my address? My personal address? Yes, okay. I live at Thirty-four Fifty-six East Summer Hill Drive in Cottonwood Heights. I have some concerns about it.
Can you move that microphone just a little closer?
Oh, okay. Is this better?
Thank you.
I'm a little nervous, all right. I have some concerns about this. I kind of agree with David Pack. I'm really not sure about the, the building itself. One of the things I was hoping to see was a circular-type drive so that people could have an easy pickup, you know, for the children. That is kind of a concern to me, having been at these kind of places, so it's an easy in, easy out. There's not very many schools super close to this place, so I don't know how students are going to get there other than parents driving them. So maybe that'll work and maybe it won't work. I'm not sure. I am concerned, though, they said that they changed the boundary lines, and I'm, I think that's to the north. Is that correct? On the lot, okay? A few years ago, there was a, an item that's brought before you guys, and they had half of the building on one of our lots. So I'm hoping that you guys check to make sure that it's the same, that they're on the right lots, okay? So again, I hope this business goes through if you guys decide that it should, but I am concerned about the parking out there. They, they looked at the building. We are planning on office buildings going in out there, you know, professional office buildings, so let me know when it happens, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to comment on this item?
Hi, Charlie Ward with B B Ward Enterprises, a general contractor for Mr. Burton. And I would just like to say, as I've gotten to know Mr. Burton, his great care for the community and what he's trying to achieve here with having the instructional and just offering the tutoring services for the kids to come. I just think it would be a great addition to have. And as far as how the kids will get there, it's no different than how the kids go from school and they get to their gymnastics or their dance classes or they, you know, there are other activities. They have to find a way, whether it's parents driving or older siblings. I don't think that would, you know, I don't, I don't see that being any different. As far as the parking or the congestion of it, there's a hotel right across the street, and, I mean, hotels generate a lot of traffic, especially between the hours of three and six, that's check-in. As far as the drop zone, it's a semi-circle, if we could pull that up. So it's a pull-in off the street. You just swing in, drop, and then circle back out. Myself, I don't see that as being a conflict, but, you know, that's for you to decide. There isn't more than adequate parking space again. If there's a hundred kids coming, a hundred kids aren't driving. As far as the design of the building, if we could pull that up? Yes, it's a metal building. However, the exterior is a stucco aggregate application, insulated panels. It doesn't even look like a metal building. We have met the design criteria of the bump outs, ERISOPE, so I think it would be a great addition. I mean, the hotel across the street is a stucco square building. I think it would just be a great addition. I don't think it's going to look like a metal building if, if that's, you know, a concern. And I would like to close with that. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Dan Millet. I'm the Director of Development for Four Square Properties. We're the property owner. We created the parcel to allow this use to come before you this evening. There were three 1.26 acre lots in a row that we own, 309, 310, and lot 311. We combined 309 with half of 310 to create this parcel for this use. Like the commission and my staff, we discussed internally and externally about this use and the applicability on this property. We own properties surrounding this site, obviously, creating the majority of Jordan Landing. Do not want to cause a negative impact on, on those assets that we control. Through discussions with Wayne and understanding his business plan, which is the majority of the time is instructional, the minority of the time is open recreation, we were comfortable that it would have enough educational aspect to qualify under the zoning requirements. We worked with Scott to, you know, complete that thought, understand it. The site plan we felt was well-developed. There was some additional articulation that was done to the elevations of the building so that it didn't look quite so industrial. But being next to an airport, we also felt that that's a good transitional element, not only in use but instruction, going from that real municipal industrial airport area to professional office and commercial beyond. So with that, I'll close my comments, but if you have any questions of us as the property owner, we'd be happy to address those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to comment on this item? We'll close the public hearing and bring back the commission. Commissioner Green.
Thank you. I'm on the design review committee. They did bring this forward. Materials that they are using do not, this will not appear to look like a metal building. We were pleased with it. In fact, approved it to come forward with the materials that they were proposing.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
So does the, did the design review committee think that the architectural character be in harmony with the other offices that are in that area?
Yes, due to the stucco, the form of stucco that they are using against the building and that type of thing, it, I think it will be a good reason. I mean, I have my doubts that I mentioned before, but as far as the design review committee was concerned, we did recommend this move forward.
It looks similar to that hotel that we booked out a lot of, that's my place, right?
Pardon me?
It looks very similar to that hotel. Thin color scheme, same material.
Yeah, it's a little lighter, but about the same, yeah.
Well, Commissioner Green, you're interested in making a motion earlier.
Yeah, I'll make it.
Go for it.
Based on the findings set forth in the staff report and on the evidence presented in the public hearing, I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary site plan for trampoline park located at Seventy-two Eighty-eight South Campus Drive in the PO zoning district with conditions one through six is listed in the staff report.
Is that...
Yeah, we've had a conditional use as well.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Sockowski. Discussion to that motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 I'll give the second one. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Take the other one.
Sure. Based on the findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence presented in the public hearing, I move that the planning condition of approve the conditional use permit with the trampoline park located at Seventy-two Eighty-eight South Campus Drive in the PO zoning district with, with conditions one and two listed in the staff report.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Sockowski. Discussion to that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Commissioner Sockowski.
Due to the length of the potential next one, I would ask for a quick five-minute recess.
No. No. All right, we stand and churn for five minutes. Thank you. Let's, uh, let's reconvene and get on this last item. So our sixth item is the Jordan Landing Entertainment Village, seventy-three oh one South Jordan Landing Boulevard, uh, considering our preliminary site plan in SC three zone for Four Square Properties, Dan Milich is the applicant. Welcome back, sir.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. Dan Milich, Director of Development for Four Square Properties. Pleasure to be here this evening. Finally, um, I say that, uh, because we've been trying to get here for at least two years now with this redevelopment effort of the Entertainment Village. It's something we've talked about as a company for easily the last three years. Uh, part of it is creating the synergy from, uh, tenant interest and the other part of it is, uh, obviously the, putting the financial package together to be able to pull it off. So it's starting to all come together now. Part of that effort actually was the, uh, sign development program that you all saw here just a, a few short weeks ago, um, creating more signage opportunities for the additional tenants that we're hoping to generate here. We'll have an, an opportunity to generate, uh, seventy additional tenants in this reconfigured area in front of the Entertainment Village.
Whoa.
And I know Scott's, in his presentation is going to go into, uh, kind of the nuts and bolts and numbers, uh, but I kind of wanted to give a, just more of a, a general overview and, and say, uh, you know, we've, we've had this relationship with the city since the late nineteen nineties, uh, when Jordan Landing was first, uh, conceived and, and originally developed. Um, we believe it's, it's been a great, uh, working relationship and a great partnership throughout the years. Um, one of the things that, uh, was developed early on was the Cinemark Theater. This is one of the first phases of the development of Jordan Landing and the commercial retail establishments and restaurants around the, the Cinemark. This was done in, uh, begun in nineteen ninety-nine, so nearing twenty years old now. The center as a whole, um, you know, just, it needs a facelift, uh, it, it needs a, you know, that next shot in the arm, uh, from signage, from exterior painting, uh, looks of building, new character representations for the architecture that we're proposing. Um, we have a, a video that, if you indulge me, we're going to run through, um, it as well. And, uh, the, yeah, we'll just go ahead and do that now. The, the significance of, of, you know, this effort is, it's approximately a hundred and twenty thousand square feet that we're adding because we're, we're tearing some retail down, building some new retail back. Um, this shows the parking field that's to the east of Cinemark, uh, and, and the Entertainment Village and, and a number of people park in this parking field, actually. We need a, a, a way to draw these people, uh, across to the west towards Cinemark and this is one of the ways that we intend to do it with the, a, a system of portal entries that we're proposing in, in key locations. This is the one that's off to the east parking lot. And here you are coming up across the major corridor that runs through in front of Cinemark, through the drop-off area, and then up into the plaza, heading towards Cinemark, which is, it's kind of buried in the background there now. Uh, before it was a little bit more of an open view to get to Cinemark, not only coming from the east, but especially from the south. Again, loo- looking at it as many, as many as seventy new, uh, tenants, uh, for this project area, we're proposing more softscape, uh, than exists out of Jordan Landing right now, even though we're increasing the building square footage. And we're doing this by, uh, removing some hardscape areas, um, and creating, uh, gathering points. This is, I guess the best way to describe it is, uh, more of a village concept. And we feel that we needed to break Jordan Landing down into smaller bites, if you will, uh, and, and therefore we came up with this village idea that this is the Entertainment Village and we're gonna, in the future, as we continue to redevelop Jordan Landing, create additional villages. Um, this fountain design, as, as an example, is, is approximately, uh, a million dollar fountain. Um, you know, does it really need to be that expensive? Maybe not, uh, but, you know, it, it's definitely a significant design feature that we're considering, uh, and, and it's a focal point right in front of Cinemark. This is a brand-new street that, that's being proposed as, uh, part of the redevelopment, probably easier seen from the, the site plan view, but, um, it really breaks it down into, uh, almost like a downtown street where it's, it's pedestrian scale, it's, it's walkable, there's, there's parking on both sides of it, there's street trees and street furniture. Um, you know, the hope is it, it applies itself more like a downtown street and that would be in be in this area right here. We've also worked closely, not only with the planning staff, but, uh, engineering and, and fire department as well. Um, we have, uh, proposed a fire access route that actually runs through the plaza and connects here to here and allows emergency vehicle and fire truck access through, through that point. Um, worked closely with Paul to, to make that happen. Uh, so there's no permanent fixtures in there and it's a minimum of, I believe, twenty, twenty feet wide, uh, with the vertical clearance requirement as well met. And it was something that, uh, our designers were able to achieve and still keep the, the look and the feel of it, being a, a plaza and an engaging environment, not only for the public that's going to come here, but, but from our, our tenants as well. Um, one of the items that, uh, the city generated a, a retail market study and analysis, uh, back in twenty thirteen, uh, and it identified Jordan Landing, uh, accounting for forty-two percent of all city retail sales. Well, the, the sales tax portion that the city derives from forty-two percent of the retail sales coming from Jordan Landing amounted to six million, five hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars to the City General Fund revenue in fiscal year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. The years since then have increased slightly, but that's a good benchmark number to consider. Forty-two percent retail sales tax generated, retail sales generated in that tax dollar amount coming to the City General Fund on an annual basis and increasing since then, year by year. Another a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of gross leasable retail space will obviously add to that. We believe that this village concept is going to be very successful and we want to kind of take the show on the road, if you will, within Jordan Landing and start breaking the bigger pieces down into smaller pieces. And we're very excited about it. We, uh, welcome any comments that you may have. Um, I have, uh, I didn't bring my architect here tonight, uh, but we have, uh, what I think is a, is a strong architectural package as well. Uh, some of the exterior finishes are, uh, more schematic and conceptual at this point because a- as I found out in the retail industry, many of those architectural elements and features are dictated by the, ultimately, the tenant and, and it's driven more in that way, but we, we have a palette that we're going to stick to, we have a concept and a theme that we're going to stick to and we're going to make sure that, uh, this is a quality, uh, class-one, uh, product when we're done with it. And again, approximately a forty million dollar investment for, uh, for this redevelopment effort.
We might have a few questions and comments here. Uh, Commissioner Stokowski.
Thank you. Um, I would just first like to compliment you on this design, it's beautiful and, and very visually pleasing, um, and, and also thank you for all that you've done for West Jordan, Four Square Properties has always, uh, done really nice stuff in, in Jordan Landing and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Um, just one quick question, um, as we look at the design here, I noticed where the, currently where the theater sits, um, you've got the storefronts that are coming in front of it, there's a little gap that's behind, uh, where the, currently where the theater has its marquees. Um, it looks like that's just going to be kind of an open area. Would that be closed off or what's the intent there?
Commissioner, that, that will be an open area. It, it needs to remain open for access, not only from the, uh, back of the new building, but these required exits from the theater. Um, all of the marquee signage and everything is going to be relocated here for the theater. The, the big awning cover that's over the theater right now, everybody that's been there knows, that thing, uh, it, it sits too low. It, you, you kind of feel like you're, you know, you're doing this when you're walking in. We're going to raise that up and, uh, it's not really, uh, evident here, but, uh, obviously adding these columns, uh, raising that up, opening up that space, um, that's the primary entry point to the theater. These are required exits from the theater. These doors here, these doors here, again, working closely with Paul and Fire, uh, we've been able to keep those openings at their required dimensions, uh, so that people can safely get out of the buildings in case of an emergency, but they're not primarily used. There are service entrances otherwise and the same with the entrances in the back of the new buildings that we're proposing adjacent to the Cinemark.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Green.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you, it's fantastic. Thank you for your commitment to West Jordan, that's a big deal. Um, at the beginning of the video, and this is more just a curiosity question, you walked us through that portal. Is there going to be anything in there or is it just a covered portal that somebody walks through? What's kind of the idea of going through there?
This will be, uh, food service space here, next door. In here, there could be, um, we, we, we're not planning anything right now, but there, there could be small kiosks, there could be things of that nature i- in that space, but right now it's primarily just a covered way and an entry portal to get over to the Entertainment Village area.
Thank you. Hmm, maybe well as little ticket kiosks, so I don't have to stand in line at the
That's a great idea. Self-service ticket.
Something like that, yeah. No, this looks amazing. Uh, I'm, I'm, again, more just for curiosity, what's your, uh, what's your timeframe for build-out?
Well, you know, Cinemark is, um, primary tenant here. Um, their, uh, inconvenience, if you will, will be fairly great with these two buildings right adjacent to the front of that building. And also for emergency access reasons and other reasons, we're definitely going to have to phase this development. Our goal is to start with this building, get this side graded out. We have a huge underground detention facility that is seventy-two inch diameter pipes that's right where this building is, right here. That, that takes all our stormwater and detains it on-site as required by the city and state. That all needs to be moved over here. That whole thing needs to get moved. So we're going to do all this at that, at that time and do one side, um, so only one side is tore up, if you will. And Cinemark and everybody else in the Entertainment Village still has this parking field and all this down here to work with. And then we're going to flop the other side. But our goal is to be open in, uh, twenty eighteen.
Nice, that's good.
Really aggressive, but.
I'm excited, I think it looks amazing. Commissioner Green.
So the, the, uh, the street runs between the portal and the, the main village, that's the current, that's the current main street through, um, that's the current main street through Jordan Landing now.
Yes, sir.
I was just wondering if there's any way to divert that around the front or anything, just to, but never mind, that'd be too costly. You just...
Yeah, we, we, our goal was to maintain the existing street system as best we could. Uh, we did talk to staff about this pedestrian crossing here and, um, there is a signal.
There's a stop sign here.
There's a signal.
This location?
No.
No, it's just all stop signs.
Yeah, they're all stop signs.
The nearest signal's down by, uh, down by Lowe's.
I'm sorry, that's correct, farther off the map.
Yeah, you got a signal.
There's one there, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have stop signs, stop signs, and, and we were debating, is this a push-button, uh, actuator pedestrian, uh, like at the airport type thing, where it stops, stops traffic or, um, but we haven't gotten into that final design level yet with staff, but we have approached that subject.
I'd be an advocate of that, having just eaten dinner at that one there and walked across for ice cream Saturday night, it was a little bit sketchy, uh, getting across that street safely, so. If there's any, and looks like you guys are doing ready sidewalks there to make that a little bit more obvious.
Right.
Any other questions for the applicant? Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Scott, can you top that video?
I won't even try.
Uh, all the resources West Jordan has, you can't top that, come on.
I knew, uh, the applicant would bring his A-game, so I, I didn't even, uh, didn't even bother, so. Like, like, uh, Mr. Milich indicated, I, I'll go through some of the nuts and bolts. Uh, I think the, the animations did a really good job of, of showing you the, the, what the, what the vision is going to be. Um, again, uh, a- as you well know, uh, the Entertainment Village is, is the, the heart and center of, of Jordan Landing and, uh, as indicated by the applicant, uh, this is the first of hopefully many, uh, uh, revisions and, uh, to refresh the, and, and, and figure it that the center, um, let's see. A- again, just to, for context, for residents that are here, um, this is, uh, Zone SC three, regional commercial, um, we only have one other regional commercial center, uh, or designation in, in the city, which is out at the Ninetieth and, and Mountain View Corridor, and so this is, uh, the only active regional commercial, uh, we've got in the city currently. This, let me go back, so this is what the current layout is, uh, and I'll hit a little bit of an animation, uh, that'll show you kind of the, the before and after. Um, the red, uh, are the existing building footprints, uh, with the black, uh, the, the proposed layout. So I'll play it for you one more time. Again, there's going to be, as, as, as Dan's indicated, there's a lot of shifting that has to take place and phasing is going to be critical, uh, to, to keeping the, uh, the main tenant, uh, happy and, and, uh, allow for, for some of those businesses to, to be relocated within the general vicinity that they are currently located. Um, overall, what you see on that screen represents, uh, a net increase of about eighty thousand square feet of commercial, uh, uh, building, um, includes entertainment uses, restaurants. Uh, so when we first started to work with the applicant, we were, we were very excited, obviously, about the, the opportunity to refresh the center. Uh, but we did have some concerns and, and they mainly revolved around, uh, parking and, and how this might impact, uh, the existing, uh, setup, uh, for, for, uh, getting people there to the center. Obviously, the applicant is very, uh, can, uh, aware and concerned and wanted to make sure that, uh, they have adequate parking, not only per city code, but they have specific tenants that require their own standards. So, um, as we reviewed it, uh, really, in my, in my estimation, what was the catalyst to really get this thing moving was the recent renovation of Cinemark Theater where they, uh, removed a lot of their sta- well, all of their stadium seating, uh, and, and put in the, uh, the nicer, climbing, comfortable seats that hopefully all of you've had a chance to enjoy. Uh, this slide shows you kind of the, the before and after, uh, scenario regarding the parking. Uh, again, right now, or I guess the renovations have been completed in Cinemark, uh, but they, they had, uh, you know, seven hundred and thirty-three spaces for their roughly, you know, fifty-six hundred seats. Well, after the renovation, they're down to twenty-three hundred seats. Uh, and with that simple reduction, that, you know, that put them in the black, an additional four hundred and twelve spaces to play with, uh, which Which again, was the real catalyst to get things moving, to meet parking requirements. Total shopping center parking availability as of today, just shy of 4,500 spaces. And I'll have, I have the map, and I think I included it in your staff report that shows you the breakdown of those 4,500 spaces. After all said and done, the total spaces are going to, it's going to be around 4105, let's see, 4,158 spaces. So, they're going to reduce it by about, you know, 340 spaces from what you've got today. They're still, they still need parking code with all the shifting and revamping that they're proposing. This is a layout of the various parking fields that we've asked them to provide to show you the context of the significant amount of parking that's provided in Jordan Landing. Again, the, when we were looking at the proposed redevelopment of this entertainment village, I think right now, you got, you have a lot of people parking on the south, maybe some on the north side of the village to go in and view a movie or to grab a bite to eat. Hopefully with the redesign here, with the greater emphasis and nexus and connectivity, we'll get more people parking out here and using this nice entry portal, drawing them through this village up to the theater. Obviously, they still have plenty of options to the north and south, but they still have a significant amount of parking that's available out to the east. As we were reviewing the site, the elements of the site plan, the building elevations and all of those things, we came across their entry, let's see, I don't know if I've got it here. I'll use one of Dan's slides. We came across this concept with their portal entry signs. And the planning staff is very supportive of this type of signage. For one, as you can clearly see, Cinemark is going to be significantly surrounded by other uses, kind of buried within the site. Which is fine, because you get a lot of movement and traffic funneling past various uses to get to the theater. But we understand and recognize that there is a need potentially to direct people into that theater complex. Creates a sense of place. We talk a lot about that in the planning world. It creates a nice gateway into the village, if you will. That being said, we've gone through the sign code backwards and forwards, trying to find a nice category where we can plug this new portal entry sign. And whether it's square footage, or height, or spacing requirements with our existing pylon and pole signs and those types of things, there's nothing that really works. And so, as mentioned in the staff report, I placed a copy of this portal entry sign just as a kind of a precursor to what I hope is a text amendment in the near future where we can draft an amendment to our sign code that will allow or support this type of use. The commission isn't going to be weighing in on this particular item, nor any signage in tonight's site plan review. But it would be nice to get your input and feedback regarding this. Any thoughts or direction would be appreciated. So again, that is the purpose of throwing that little tangent into your staff report. We've gone through all the required findings of fact and believe that all of the findings can be met. And we recommend that the planning commission approve this preliminary site plan. Without any further questions.
Commissioner Black?
Well, thank you. Well, since you're looking for feedback, I'm grateful that the DRC has already looked at the safety of the pedestrian crossing. That was my opinion. As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, I spend a lot of time over at Jordan Landing. I counted up 13 movies I've seen this summer, so it's way too comfortable. My wife fell asleep watching the movies. That's the only problem I have, but the new reclining chairs are pretty comfortable. But I'm grateful for the revitalization and 70 new tenants, you know, more revenue for West Jordan. And so I'm grateful that the city and the applicant are working so closely together to make sure all of the infrastructure is there for safety, for long-term commitments, with all of the growth that we're seeing here in West Jordan. Obviously, some divisions being proposed and coming in. I think that more parking spaces, more shops.
You're right, Scott. Could be definitely a great thing for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scotty?
Thank you. Yeah, I love the design. I love how pedestrian it is. It is. I love how it's got that central gathering area. Yeah, it just feels really, really nice. The one concern that I have, and it's probably already addressed and thought out, but I just want to throw my two cents in, is those areas that are right up against the theater, they even look really dark in the drawing here. I'm sure that we've thought about lighting in those areas, but just as a potential for crime and safety. I would hope that those areas, yeah, right there, would be very, very well lit. So that, you know, as people are coming out of the theater and moving around that area, that they'll feel safe and that those that maybe would be ill and have ill intent would be less likely to look at that area as a target. But it's beautiful, and I think, I think this is something that's really going to add a lot to Jordan Landing. I like it a lot.
Commissioner Hanson?
Scott, you mentioned the signs. I do like those, because as you're driving along that road at this time, you're kind of looking for the theater. And so if you've got the signs there along the road that will kind of direct you to where the theater is at, with all the building that will be going around it, I think those are attractive. And I think they are, it is a good idea to allow that, because as you're going along the road, you don't want to slow traffic down as you're looking for a way to get into the theater.
Commissioner Green?
I was just going to comment on the signs. I think the signs look great. Just as far as your feedback goes, I think this is a great concept.
Commissioner Green?
I think the signs are going to be okay there. I have to tell you, when I look at this, my biggest, my biggest concern is, and knowing my experience is driving through Jordan Landing, people are not going to park to the east in front of that, the, yeah, in that area. People are going to come, people are going to park out to the north and the south and walk in from the wings more than they are going to park out there, just because of the way the traffic flows. And so I bet, I don't know if that makes much difference there, but, you know, I almost, from this perspective, I wonder if it's almost better, you wouldn't put the entrance on the north of the south side and have people come in from the north of the south, but...
There's sign language.
Yeah, but you know what I'm saying, is that big entrance mall thing, have it on the north of the south instead of having it cross the road. But that's me.
Oh, that, that walkway?
Yeah, the, yeah, the walkway, just to the right of where that building there, that's the walkway. I'm almost wondering if it wouldn't be better in the north parking lot or the south parking lot and connecting, not try to cross the street, just because I know the traffic patterns in Jordan Landing. Because I drive, you know, I drive through there enough to know what they're like, and I'm just wondering if that would be better. But that's, you know, to me, that's probably the most negative part of the design, is the crossing the street and trying to get people to park to the east, but...
As I was looking at the, at the street level view of this, it's almost unfortunate that you couldn't align that pathway with the fountain. That would have been a nice draw from across the street to pull people straight towards that.
They, they agree. There's a little bit of a dog light there. There, as you remember, that there is a fountain, a smaller water feature that would be visible from the road. But yes, the main water feature is up there.
How much of this would fit across the street? Just throwing out a wild idea, you know, 78th and Redwood, it would... Just throwing, just throwing it out there.
They gotta get rid of the school district.
As we've talked about the city center. Anyway, any further questions for her, Scott? Commissioner Black?
Just one last thing. I know so many people have mentioned just all the stop signs there going on the, on the front. You know, when you see the raised walkway, but has there been any talk with additional shops and the increased traffic? I don't have any answer to, you know, the question. I don't know more I can do than all the stop signs. But accelerate, stop, accelerate, stop, accelerate, stop. As Commissioner Green said, if you're trying to go through there, you know, you get, you have to stop so many times that you get impatient, people driving as well. But I don't have an answer to anything better, but has there been any talk about an alternate way of managing all of those intersections?
They did do a traffic study, and I believe I included the executive summary page in your report, but...
I missed that. I'm sorry. I read through it.
But as far as I recall, there was no mention of, the study mainly focused on the parking, not necessarily the traffic flow through the area. It's a fine line. If you were to remove several stop signs for vehicular efficiency, then you're possibly putting pedestrians in greater harm as speeds increase. So, I don't have an answer for you, but I know that they have looked at it. And I guess the only change anticipated with this proposal is to do that pedestrian, raised pedestrian walkway. The little speed table, basically, that would be another visual cue that, hey, people are walking here. We'll work with our engineering department, with a traffic engineer. There may be a need, a final site plan to implement, you know, flashers or something.
Walk or something.
Mm-hmm. So...
Right. Yeah, I do see that in criteria seven, just the traffic. The roads are adequate. But I just didn't know, all the stop signs, I don't, there's a lot of grief to a lot of people. I just hear them crying about it.
It's not the stop signs, it's the inability to comprehend the four-way stop.
No, you go. No, no, no.
Well, and you know, when you're talking about, and obviously this is something that the engineering department can look at along with the applicant, but I'm wondering that in a couple of those, in a couple of the areas to the north and to the south, where you've got traffic crossing the, whatever that is, Campus Hues, wherever that is, Mill Street, traffic circles or something like that might actually be a beneficial way of managing, better managing the traffic if we can get creative there. That might also make it more attractive and some other things, but... Just a thought.
Okay. On that note, we'll open it up to the public. If there's anybody who would like to comment on this particular item. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Hearing no discussion. Commissioner Green?
I'll make the motion, and based on the findings set forth in the staff report and the mission received in this meeting, I move that the planning commission approved the preliminary site plan for Jordan Landing Entertainment Village located at 7301 South Jordan Landing Boulevard in the SC3 zoning district, with that conditions contained in the packet.
Second? Motion by Commissioner Quinn, second by Commissioner Scotty. Discussion to the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero, which concludes our agenda for the evening, unless there's anything else you guys would like to discuss. Commissioner Green?
I move, just a thought. I want to just to take a quick straw poll to see if the commissioners would be favorable, you know, look favorably upon a text amendment regarding loading bay doors, spacing, public right-of-way. It seems like we've received a lot of those lately, and I don't know if it's usually the best use of your time. Some preliminary thoughts were, you know, maybe limit those to, you know, if you're facing a collector road or a curial road, then, you know, where aesthetics might be more of a concern. Or within a certain distance, certain distance of the right-of-way of those types of roads. I'm just kind of thinking out loud, but, for example, today's item, it's across the street from another heavy industrial user. Tucked away, no one's really ever going to drive by there unless you happen to be picking up some donuts or whatever. Just some thoughts. Again, you know, we've got a ton of text amendments, and I know that we've talked about them for a long time, but is it worth throwing that in the batch of proposed amendments? Yea, yene. I don't know what your thoughts are.
Well, we're pushing six years on the commission. I don't know that we've ever denied one of them, so...
It's hard. Sometimes you sprinkle a few pine trees in front, and oh, good, so...
I would certainly be in favor. Anybody else have seen?
This is a staff thing.
I think, I really like what they did today, you know, where they added some architectural appeal. I think if we were to write it in a way that says that if you have loading bay doors in an M1 zone, and they face the road, then they have to be architecturally integrated into the building with a...
Or properly screened.
Or properly screened. But I, yeah, I think when you drive into an M1 zone, you kind of expect that there's going to be loading bay doors in there, so that's my opinion.
From a legal perspective, I think it's a great idea, because at least you've got some standards. Because otherwise, you run the risk of unintentionally approving one and not approving another when they're substantially similar. So I think it's a great idea.
Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. Scott, along with all the other ordinances that we talked about changing, but I would like to see in our landscape plan, a certain percentage of evergreens. Because they keep their color all winter long, and we just don't have this bare landscape throughout five, six months of the year. Where if we have, say, a 25, 30% of the landscape be evergreens, it keeps the site much better looking throughout the winter months.
Trick is getting them to actually live. We have a problem with evergreens dying out, but I agree.
Well, you've got that guy, you caught the guy, so... So I just think that it makes for a better-looking site plan during the winter. If we have the, still have the greenery, rather than just the bare trees. And I'd like to see more landscaping and parking lots, but that's again another.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion adjourned. Motion adjourned by Commissioner Quinn. Anybody opposed it, Scott? We stand adjourned until September 20th.